Meeting.
I'm not wearing this.
I call the meeting to order at 4:35 PM on November 3rd. I, Squail CM Netseya, I, Kung Fu Yumel. We respectfully acknowledge that we are meeting on the traditional and ancestral lands of the Coast Sailors people where we live, learn, and play. The first order of business, why I am calling the meeting, is the election of Chair. Following the election, following the election of the Chair, the Chair will call for nominations for the Vice Chair of the Board. And then we will carry on with the regular business of the meeting. So prior to calling for nominations, I have asked that Larry and Mike be scrutineers in the event of an election. Somebody's got, sorry, somebody has their volume on. Nominations are now in order for the position of Chair of the Board. Yes? Candace, do you accept the nomination for Chair?
Thank you.
Candace has accepted the nomination for Chair. We're now calling a second time for nominations for the position of Chair. I hear none. Now calling for a third and final time for nominations for the position of Chair. There are no further nominations for the position of Chair, therefore Candace has been, has been elected Chair of the Board for the next year's term.
Yeah, thank you very much. As you know, watching me, I enjoy this role and I'm not sure why. I do. Thank you very much for your support. Thank you. Okay, so I'll move to the election of Vice Chair. Open the nominations. Trustee Thor. Thank you. Trustee Bevry, you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Are there further nominations for the role of Vice Chair? So I'll call a third and final time, are there nominations for Vice Chair other than for trustee group? Hearing none, I would say that trustee group is claimed as our Vice Chair. So we don't move to move to item four, but we will move to item five, which is a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by trustee Thor, seconded by trustee group. All those in favor? Motion carries. Moving to the minutes of October 6th, open Board meeting. A motion to adopt the minutes, please. Moved by trustee to group, seconded by trustee Thor. All those in favor? Motion carries. And, excuse me, I have not been watching trustee Hutchins and Thelma, but let it be known, we shall be watching you from now on. Okay, moving through recognition and delegations to the report of the closed meeting. Secretary.
Thank you. The Board met in closed session just prior to this open session. The business was not concluded. We'll go back into closed session immediately following. There were numerous personnel items as well as property items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Snackwell. All things, aid, action list, on page 30. So are there items on staff, which is to help. Logo is on our agenda later. Anything else that staff would like to mention? Quality school is also on our agenda as well as national principles. I would just like to report to the Board that when we refer to our legacy wall that we have been working on, that the district logo is part of that particular item. And so as we move forward on the logo, we should have additional moves in the future around the legacy wall. That would be great. To be forward to that. Okay, moving to item 10, which is Chair of the Board. And I have a number of items here because there's a lot of really good things happening. We, we have to focus on COVID-19, of course, and make sure that all the health and safety protocol is in place, but at the same time, education goes on and there is quality in our schools. So first one, one, enhancing student learning framework, learning sessions. And I don't know if all the trustees have, is a, have been aware of those learning sessions. The ministry has hosted four of those sessions. Two are now complete. And I attended the two and I would really recommend them for anybody else who has time. The first one was Tony Metcalf, who I didn't realize until later is the first person or executive director or whatever his title is of OECD. So extremely knowledgeable about everything in the world of curriculum, of assessments, reporting, performance standards, performance achievement, and how we can use the new framework to support continuous learning all of the time. And he said some really dramatic things that I think we should keep in mind. It was about e-learning, about how significant e-learning has become throughout the world. And it's been heightened because of the COVID. But he is believing that e-learning will be part of all learning in the future. And he talked about an example in Hong Kong where they have five days a week. One of those days is e-learning. And that is planned. It wasn't ad hoc or it isn't, you know, something that parents are demanding. It is, that is the way learning should occur. So we, we should keep that in our mind as, as we move forward. Another important item for me that he talked about was students. And we talk about student voice, student agency, but he talked about learner power and how we should be not only listening, but incorporating as we go through whatever design and decision-making work we're, we're involved in. And I'm sure there's a lot of other things that we have to offer all of us. And our superintendent has been attending. I'm not sure who else from our district, but it, but the sessions are well attended. The last one was a session on curiosity and inquiry by Drs. Linda Halbert, no Judy Halbert and Linda Cazer. And they are amazing in terms of offering us evidence. And so that's something that's part of the new framework that we need to consider. What evidence are we going to use to determine how our students are achieving and how we should be approaching learning? And I thought, one of the things they said that was really important to me anyway, is what really matters. And it's aligned with the key, we put, and they talked about five things. One is that we own the purpose of why we're doing it, what's it about, what are we doing? Be clear on your focus. How are you going to provide that strategic plan? What does it look like? And how do you focus on it? Choose your words and your stories carefully. I thought that was really good because we do start with a lot of stories. And I'm not sure that we have refined them at this point, or I haven't even thought about that. Learn with others and share with others. And the fifth thing really impacted me, and that was apply the first people's principles of learning to your leadership work. And I have not thought of that yet, but I will be in the future. And I think it's something we need to come back to, those principles of learning. Now, there are two more sessions and I really hope that you have an opportunity. The next session is on community engagement. And the one after that is on indigenous education, which I really love. That's just a bit of information for you. The next item is on the BCSDA meeting of Board Chairs. And I did share with you already the three new pamphlets that they have produced at BCSDA, which are, are amazing. And they packaged them up and I immediately thought of our orientation sessions for new trustees. They're everything you need to know. There's advocacy for boards, there's rights and responsibilities. So what, what role do we have as a trustee? And then what role do we have as a board? Very interesting when you start sorting out what you're able and, and what you should be doing. And the third is the government processes. And we have worked through those over the years and I'm sure we know all of this, but for new trustees, it is a piece of gold. And the last thing they took us through was what should we be planning in this next year to be equipped to, to do the best that we can for our kids? And they talk about learning loss, how kids have, last June, only had part time, kinds of time to, to learn. And then they're not sure about what's happening this year, but we know that there's some loss. What is it? How do, how do we deal with that? The budget pressures that we have. There are increased costs for COVID-19. We have limited additional funding from provincial and federal governments. We have, may have depleted our reserves to some extent. What are we going to do when there is the expressed statement from the ministry or the government that they have 13 billion provincial deficit? What, what are we looking at in the future? And then the framework for enhancing student learning, we, we knew it was important, but one of the things that came through to me is it's, the Board is responsible for it, for writing it, although we're certainly going to be leaning on our staff, but we are responsible and our first report is due next September. Just a problem.
You, you reminded me that we haven't necessarily had sort of a Board retreat. And we have one, seven years ago or something like that. And you've got a lot of items there that I think would be, you're good points for discussion. And I'm not saying just that, I would, but I'd say, those are a lot of deep thoughts that we haven't necessarily made the opportunity to discuss. And it also comes to mind, as important as each school year is, we have, I think, two years left until the next election. So we need to bad things to start doing some, I don't want to say legacy planning or an uptake for prospective trustees. I just, I just think that we're, we're due for something like that, some of these bigger thoughts.
Any good thoughts? Do you want to put them into a motion?
Oh dear God, maybe you'd probably like to help.
Trustee Hutchins, you're asked to help with a motion around a, a retreat that delts into some of the deep learning and exploration we need to do.
I'd like to move that the Board Chair planned for a Board Retreat to be, take place sometime between now and next April.
Thank you, trustee Hutchins. Moved by trustee Hutchins, seconded by trustee. We'll leave it for trustee Croft, okay?
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Moving to your next item, which is the COVID ad hoc transition committee. And just to let you know that we had a recent meeting and everything at this point has been put into place. The health and safety protocols are being followed. Our staff are amazing everywhere and things are going really well. So the ad hoc committee will be dormant for a while until we need to reconvene. Trustee Croft?
As I understand it, we don't have COVID in ours in our district right now. What would the process be if and when we do? How are trustees notified about that? Superintendent?
If you recall, our Director of Communications shared with our trustees not too long ago, but it seems like a lifetime ago, that the first order of business would be, the first step would be alerting the superintendent and, or myself, and I would be alerting the trustees. Thank you. Moving to the next item, which is National Principals Month, which was October. So we are a wee bit late in offering our gratitude and appreciation to the principals and vice principals. However, the superintendent and the Chair of the Board met and what we came up with was a great certificate for each one of our principals and vice principals. I'll, I'll maybe read it out so you can see it rather than try and pass it around. So certificate of appreciation, the certificate is proudly presented to the name in recognition of your outstanding service and dedication to your profession in the Couch and Belly School District. The Board of Education of the Couch and Belly School District recognizes and celebrates the profound impact you make as a principal or vice principal in your school, with your students, and in your community. And so we have prepared, actually, our trustee, Tracy Jones, has prepared these certificates and put them into packages that are at the back of liaison schools. And we think this is an opportunity for the trustees to go out to their schools after making a time appointment with their principals and vice principals and present them. So does that work for everyone?
No.
No, it's in here, how put on there? Yes, okay. And a yes. Okay, perfect. So the packages are here. You just pick them up whenever you want to go out. Our hope is that we get them out sooner rather than later because October is over and it's time to, to present. Okay, moving to the next item, Quomitchin School. And this is just letting you know that we are still not ready to deal with our motion on designating the campus as closed because we're still waiting for the safety order. Into Board Action. First one, Remembrance Day. There will be very little people or very few people in attendance. So the motion just asks that we contribute to the REES and, and all four Senate tasks this year. So, is your mover for the motion? Trustee. Moved by trustee group, seconded by trustee Hutchins. All those in favor? Motion carries. Next one is logo. And I'm going to invite our Director of Communications to come in and present the logo. So Mike Russell, are you coming in personally or are you?
I am, I'm here online, but I can come in personally if you prefer.
I think coming in would be good because we, we could barely see you.
I'll be there in a moment.
All right.
Secretary Treger or Superintendent?
I was just going to query whether we were ready to present on the live screen, but I think he's going to attempt to do so.
I'm going to turn the monitor to pick it up.
Welcome, Mr. Russell.
Oh.
We're delighted to have you.
So let me share my screen here. And can everybody online here be okay or do we need to switch the volume? I don't, oh, can you just? I can't, I can't be off. My computer's not working on the new.
I got it. Here. For Mike. And I can see his screen.
Just one moment, one moment. A little bit, I think I'm close.
All right. Awesome. Well, thank you, thank you Chair for having me. Last year, this, this project actually started last year. If it wasn't to, you know, we, we had a motion for the Board to do it, although it started back in June or made it last year, but we actually started this almost a year prior without even knowing it. And that was with our strategic plan. So this, this project was born out of the engagement and the feedback that we received on our strategic plan. So I'll run through this presentation, it's brief, but I want to go through that and then show you the new logo. So the logo creation process, like I said, actually started with our strategic plan. And that was the big engagement that the Board, the Board started last year, going and asking everybody in our district, whether it was parents, students, staff, you know, staff around here, the Board had a lot of input, in what you wanted out of the school district, and what the things that really drove us to be who we are and what we really value. And that engagement was, was huge. We sent out questions every, and we saw around our walls what they wanted for their future. And we sent it out to staff and they had staff meetings and sent us back some great information. But as that information came in, the Board started to make a realization that, yeah, the old logo that we had didn't really represent what we were hearing and what was coming back. It was a standard logo that's used around the Cowichan Valley, didn't really speak specifically to our district, speak to the new strategic plan, or speak to any of those sections within the strategic plan. So the Board last year, late last year, made a motion to develop a new logo. And that was to be done through a local indigenous artist. Greatly and very helpful for us, we actually have a wonderful indigenous artist who works with us, Stuart Pagetwan. And he was the artist that was chosen to lead the logo process and development of the artwork that would then form the logo. So Stuart took all that information that we received from our strategic plan, that we had gone through advisor, we'd gone up to staff, we'd gone to so many different people. He took that information, he distilled it into his artwork. What he did was created five different versions of the logo. And you'll remember that we brought those to the Board. We brought those around to many of our other partners as well. We had it over advisory for feedback, with our union partners, with DPAC. And we were able to get a lot of really good feedback, but clearly one logo or one piece of artwork out of there was definitely shining above the rest that the Board wanted to go ahead with. And so that's what happens. The Board chose that, that logo. And then the process to change that artwork and bring it into a usable logo that would represent the district, that's when that served. So what I want to do is stop talking because, you know, that's kind of my thing. And I want to let Stuart tell you about the logo in his own words.
Yep, sound. It's, it's dead anyway.
Yeah. Sorry for the technical difficulties, we're going to fix the sound for you all. Just have to reshare here.
Many times I hear, oh, we're here on the unceded territory of the Couch and People. What does that mean? Like it means anything until we start taking action. And I think one of the, you know, the moves that School District 79 made was to put a Coast Sailor image up. This is going to represent who they are and where they come from. It is fairly important to hear our story, hear in Couch and, and our relatives and our neighboring sailors' territories. And I felt a little bit pressured when I was first asked because I know it, it means a lot, I know it's a big deal. This will be the, the symbol of our school district and it's the first thing that people will see. Hi, Netseya, Anta, Kuaqul, Kinetan, Ak, Shlam Shlamalitz, Ete, Eekawitson. Good morning. My name is Stuart Pagetwan. I am from here, Couchin. This will be my 22nd year in the school district. I never thought I would be here today, still doing what I do, not to mention creating a logo for everybody to see. I find my job very much in mind of what we're trying to do, to be a bridge to, from our indigenous community to Duncan community, to all the parents out there. Get to know who we are and what we're all about. When I designed the logo, it, it of course represents the coastal people. We talked about, you know, our, our oceans and our rivers being the highways of our sailish people. And I hope I done justice by, you know, you know, anchoring a canoe in the middle of it. When we talk about the Couch and Mestemo, the Couch and People, we have to talk about, you know, our canoes, our ocean, our rivers. Also, you'll see in the background, there's the circle, it represents the sun. Our elders will say, as the sun comes up, we give our blessings. We say thank you for all the things that we have in our life. That's the significance of the sun. If you look inside the sun, you'll see Spal, the raven, Waches, the frog. They're all about transformation, they're all about changing of seasons as we go. Also, another symbolism of where do we need to go? What are we going to do to achieve that? You'll see four people in the canoe represent, you know, our community, represent the school district, represent the nations. Working together, you'll often hear a phrase in our community, not so much following, that we work together with one heart and one mind. I, I think there's a lot going on there, there with the canoe because it has so many teachings around that. A canoe is not an object, canoe is a alive being. So much respect is given to those canoes, higher to conduct yourself. It is a great honor. It is a great honor to be on a canoe, be paddling one. And also, you know, the importance of people. Why are we here? What are we doing? Which way are we going? Are we in sync? Do we even have our paddles in the water? Are we even on the same canoe? History has proven that, yeah, we have not been on the same canoe. We are not working together. And I think this time and age, this is an opportunity that we all can get in the canoe together. We can all paddle at the same time. When we talk about working together, I think we have to do that. We have to move together.
Thank you to Stuart for all of that wonderful work and for the beautiful new logo, and for his wonderful story on how that came to be. So this is it. This is the new Cowichum Valley School District logo. Stuart did an amazing job and were able to take this with his guidance and make that transformation from that artwork that you saw in the video and that we presented before, to this beautiful representation. I'm very proud of the work that's gone into it and where it's landing now. So while this is the logo, there's always a caveat. There are variations to the logo. And I have some on here, but there are a few more that I'll describe as well. But we do have two different primary logos. One is sort of a square shape and one's a landscape size. And so they're for different uses, different, you know, if they're going on t-shirt versus a letterhead versus some other graphic designs. We have different ways to put it on to those pieces. But we also have different ways as well to do things like this. We can just have orange and black. So we can screen, do a screenshot, screen coding on a t-shirt, and that gradient might not show up in something like that, but we can have it done in a two color. We can also have it done in black and white. So if you're printing a black and white document, you don't want to print with this rather than the full color. And then we have some reverse images as well. So say you want to do black t-shirts, we have you covered there with a black and gray, a white and full color, and then a white and two color as well. So what's next, you ask, although you didn't, but I shall tell you. It is the brand standard document that I am creating. And what that is, is that goes through all of our uses of the logo. How you can properly put it on something, how far it has to be away from another logo or the edge of a, the edge of a piece of paper, where you can put it on a t-shirt. What sizes you can make it as expanded to, what sizes you can shrink it down to. And all the different things you can't do with it. As well as they're laying out the correct name for the district that we're going to use, email signatures, photography, and on and on and on. So that's where we're at right now, is this document is almost done. But then with the board, if the board passes a motion to accept the slogan, we'll launch it tomorrow morning. I'll stop sharing there.
We appreciate the work that's gone into it for sure. Just to add it to yourself and anybody else as well. Trustee Crawford?
I just had, I don't know what the word is. You have a flash.
A bit of activity.
Yeah. Mike and I were doing something, we kind of, and we have something that eventually once it's done, announced to the board, which pretty much follows with the stuff. I didn't realize it to just not happen.
Wow. So Trustee Crawford, just a quick question. I'm interested, where do you, it's often used to edit videos.
I don't do videos.
Oh, you know, the video side.
I hire, sorry.
Of course. Oh, what I was saying was, I would, oh, heaven, that one.
Well, you took a lot of job to do that part of it. Posting your caliber, yeah, I'm sorry.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much. Yeah. And you can see it looks good on our certificate, so we'll be using it everywhere.
Always a pretty fantastic.
Okay, moving to next item, which is Wellness Recovery Center. And the suggested motion is there, because we have yet to receive the response from Island Health. So this is a motion that we write a second letter to them, copying the Minister of Health, just to ask what their response is. By Trustee Crawford, seconded by Trustee Cameron, all those in favor? Motion carries. I see it. I saw you put your hand up, Trustee Dome, and I saw it. I'm not sure where Trustee Hutchins is. Oh, there we go. Oh, and I see his hand. Perfect. Thank you. And the last item for me is the motion that was put through BEBC meeting regarding requesting the ministry that an increase in funding to the same standard as the upper part.
I would like to add to that motion.
Why don't you just develop the motion? Oh, it's not on the table.
Okay, that's for the tradition committee, for a letter be sent to ministry and to BCSDA. Requesting just that distributed learning per FTE, I mean, to be included. Thank you. With our trusty here, second by Trustee Crawford. I have a question to you about your motion. Are you speaking copy to the BCSDA or is it a, a new motion? Well, I would read it to the AGM, what can I do to you? The AGM or April? What can the council? I'm sorry, it's been hours of that. When they were in any motion, I would like it to be presented to all boards. We're not the only board that is on it, so I would like it to be as a motion.
I'm wondering if that should be a second.
It's going to be a different motion altogether. This was a motion about writing a letter, so I think you should do a separate motion, because it's got a different action.
Okay. So can we divide this and have the first motion without a copy to the BCSDA? And then we'll come back for the second motion. Okay, so the first motion, do you need a red trustee's phone line?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That the Board of Education of School District Number 79, I'm going to actually have to rewrite it because it's coming from BEBC, so it needs to be restructured. That the Board of Education of School District Number 79, Cowichum Valley, send a letter to the ministry with a copy to the BCSDA, recommending increased distributed learning per FTE funding $6100 to the standard per FTE funding level $7,560.
Thank you. Well done. Further debate on this motion? All those in favor? Carry. Moving back to Trustee Crawford's motion. That, that this motion be sent to BCSDA to, to, to. Certified by that, a, a motion to BEBC regarding the. The Board of Education SD 79 to recommend that. Secretary to read back our motion.
Secretary Treasurer, would you see this as emergent? So I think what trustee here is thinking is, should it go to the Provincial Council in February? Or should it go to the AGM?
I would say for there to be any action, the ministry's fiscal year ends on March 31st. So I would suggest that February Council would be more appropriate.
Move back to the motion.
That the Board of Education of School District Number 79, send a motion to the BCSDA Provincial Council to recommend that the ministry increase distributed learning per FTE funding $6100 to the standard per FTE funding $7,460.
Thank you. Moving back to the first, seconded by Trustee Crawford. Further debate on the motion, Trustee Crawford? What more to question? The matter is simply close.
How we snatch the FTE funding? It just seems to me that this statement and motion is restricted to one year. So I'm just asking, is that the strategic market at this time? Want to say that for all time, that, you know, like, not in trouble here, but so we make a recommendation. And that going forward, that this, how we snatch the FTE. I'm not going to mention that, but I don't think that. No, no, I don't think we've said it so much in a year. We didn't say it in the letter going to. We believe the funding, we all should be making the funding. There is no.
No, that's fine. Just the way I read it is because the specific numbers are involved. Okay, let's deal with the motion as it reads, and if it fails, then we'll go back to. Any further debate on the motion? All the questions, all those in favor? It's a Trustee Dome, Trustee Hutchins, hand up or down?
Already been up.
Up. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. And fortunately, we're moving on to item 11, Superintendent Schools. All right, I would like to provide the board with some final numbers with regard to our enrollment. And so our enrollment would be 8,111 children this year. And that would be down 51 students in our projections. And I've only 33 students from last year's enrollment numbers. So that is very good news. And if I like, if we need clarification, I can certainly provide that. So again, our enrollment overall is 8,111. And we're down 51 students with regard to our projections. I've only down 33 students from last year's numbers and student enrollment. We'll forget where we are, and I think that overall, we're.
Jason, can you turn your computer towards Robin so we can hear her better?
I'm sorry, did you say that in?
I will say it one more time. I'd like to share with the board that our final student enrollment numbers would be 8,111 students. That would be down from 51 students with regard to our projections this year. But it's only a difference of 33 students from last year's numbers. So we're very pleased with where we are in terms of our student enrollment and where we are currently. And just in addition to that, we would have a shift of 173 students currently that would go standard funding to our distance learning funding.
Further moments or questions from trustees? But I do want to tell you that that is an amazing number. Because as I've been talking with other areas across the island, we're one of the highest number of kids. Average, I believe, is 85% provincially. And we're, so congratulations to our staff, Secretary of Division.
99.6%. We're down 0.4% of our enrollment.
No kidding. That is amazing. Well done. Trustee Crawford?
But it could be. Well, because we're sort of, I think, we had a routine regarding COVID, or as much as a routine as we can be. And maybe it would be nice for the board to take that in the paper or issue a press statement and just say how proud we are of our staff and the families and the community, and all the people are helping out. And we're just getting through it. Just a big positive hope for doing kinds of.
That sounds really good. That would lead right into my superintendent's update, if I could just carry on. Because I do believe that I want to acknowledge and share the fact that we are very, very proud of the fact that our staff, all of our partners who happen to be in the line and receiving, as well as our board, in a sense of what we're creating is a level of great public confidence. And we are certainly champions of public education. And I really believe that the work that we do together and in a collaborative way is creating that hope. And so I think that that would be a really nice touch around communicating that out there. And maybe we could actually ask our Director of Communication to help us with that, with that notion. But may not be necessarily a motion I'm hearing, but it would be something that we'd like to do overall to share with our public. Although there's the problem with the motion.
Well, I'm going to make it very broad, if that's okay. And so just bear with me. I'd like to move that superintendent, with her staff, to construct a positive message of thanks and hope to be distributed broadly to the community. I think we need to make their ad, if they would. A newspaper ad or other device.
Okay.
However, we probably end at the message level.
Okay, great.
Okay. Thank you so much. Moved by Trustee Crawford. Is there a second? Trustee Cameron, any discussion on the motion?
Can you read that out to me, please?
No, no, don't read it. Secretary Treasurer, please.
That the Board of Education of School District 79, Cowichum Valley, directs the superintendent and staff to construct a positive message of thanks and hope to be distributed broadly to the community.
Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Perfect. Back to Superintendent.
All right, just an update of a number of great things that are currently happening. I think that Stuart so articulated so well in the video, there is a level of transformation that is going on in our district, and I think it is that level of hope. We are moving to, you know, working through some processes that are going to get us to excellence. And I think that with regard to our operational plan, our action plan, it will be going out with our principles and our vice principles to get feedback from all of the staff out in school with regard to any suggestions, any revisions that we would want to actually change or adjust.
Robin's hard to hear again.
So that we can certainly have our entire staff out there, understand our actions, and have input into those actions. And so as we move forward around that plan, I know that we will be certainly transforming this district, and we certainly are doing it currently. Right now, I want to acknowledge that.
Right now, I want to acknowledge that our Indigenous Knowledge Keepers are hosting some Thursday after-school sessions around Hakamina and language and culture. And so those will be beginning this week, I believe, Thursday at 4:00. But if any of our board members would like to attend, this is a great opportunity to enhance your Hakamina language ability. It's certainly not an easy language, but it is a language that we are certainly promoting and working through overall in our learning organization. I also want to alert the board around our school member state assemblies. All of our schools will be having these assemblies. They will be, of course, COVID friendly. And they will be keeping students in their cohorts this year. And some of them will be in Zoom. And so later on in the agenda, there is an attachment that shows where those. And you're certainly welcome to participate in these as well. And so for example, I know in Cole-Cobb Hill and in Co-Monteville, they are holding virtual remember, remember state, school-wide Zooms with students remaining in their classrooms. And then you have Kohhuman Elementary, they will be holding five mini-assemblies. So they're doing it in a very COVID-friendly way. And many of you can be invited if you so decide. Moving on, I want to share some photos. I'm going to ask if our Claire Spencer could actually showcase some of those photos as I move forward. So in Cole-Cobb Hill, they are engaging with try and trade. And they have great. They are recently participating in try and trade at Cowichum Secondary School. And we have some photos from teacher Trevor Rux, Division 1 class. Try and trade is for all grade sevens in the district. And they learn about a number of trades involved in home construction. Includes about being a plumber, electrician, carpenter, drywaller, painter, floor there. While they build a mini bathroom. In small groups, students have their hands on tools used by these tradespeople. As they put together their bathroom, which includes a sink and a simple electrical circuit. So that's currently happening at Cole-Cobb Hill. At Beavis School, there's a number of things happening there. So they had an elder visit and they also had a beach cleanup. On October the 15th, students at Beavis Island Elementary School were treated to a visit from a very special guest. Florence James from Penellicott County School to teach the students about the importance of orange shirt day, tell stories of her growing up on Penellicott and sync bonds with the students. Florence's teachings were based on the history of the two closely connected islands and her and her own family's history and stories from there. We are very grateful for the time that Florence spent with Beavis Island School on that particular day in sharing her teachings. On another event, again, Beavis Island School, on October the 19th, it was a positive start to the school beach cleanup day. The annual event sees the students in a one-room classroom head out outside and help keep their people on clean. For the help of two special aquatic guests, large islands were taken out of the depths of the ocean and they were surfaced. And these were the things that they found. A barbecue, a trailer tire, car battery, an old crab trap, and a few other things that were found near the public dock. The grade seven students were ready and very eager to help our two divers get the large junk out of the water. And so while the grade sevens were busy looking for those treasures, I guess the kindergarten to grade students were spent, they spent most of their time along the shoreline fetching various items from the beach. And a few of them found a large rug, mostly buried in the sand and quickly took to bring it. And between the scraps of paper and old shoes, they got their beach in tip-top shape. So very exciting work on part of students there. And then a special thank you to all the students and the staff and special volunteers who certainly helped that make that happen. That was from Beavis Island School. Moving on to Alexander Elementary, they got an opportunity to spearfish. So recently, students from Alexander Elementary School had an exceptional experience when they went salmon fishing on the Cowichum River. Under the watchful eye of Knowledge Keeper and Indigenous Support Worker Gary Johnny, students learned how to use spears to fish salmon. The high waters and not-so-helpful seal made fishing harder than usual. And the students ended up in quite empty-handed. But the afternoon by the river and the lessons learned would soon not be forgotten. And thankfully, for those hard-working students, they were rewarded by a special visit and surprise by a freshly caught salmon that was brought in by Gary at the end of the day. So it was a very exciting day of spearfishing for some of those Alexander students. I'm sure it's not that easy to do spearfishing actually, if you're able to accomplish. And then lastly, we have Paulson Elementary. And they had a number of things that were going on. On October the 29th, they used all of the COVID safety precautions that were enforced at the schools. And the staff had to reimagine their annual pumpkin parade. That parade typically sees families packed in a gymnasium as the kindergarten to grade three classes proudly march to display their hunting creations. This year, the pumpkin parade transformed the pumpkin patch, but it didn't lose any of its magic. With a whole load of pumpkins donated by the local country grocer, staff set about making a pumpkin patch out in school there so these students could hold their pumpkins. Once the selections have been made, students turned to creating some fantastic jack-o'-lanterns to display in the newly transformed gym. And with a safe entrance and exit and carefully marked paths, families could now come in and create new memories in the pumpkin patch. Also, Paulson recently unveiled their new outdoor classroom. The long-planned area became a reality this year after significant fundraising from the school and Paulson parents. And the new area now allows classes to play outside and right near the friendship forest. While all that was going on at school, the kindergarten and grade one classes were preparing for the spring. And students in those classes were busy planting a promise at the front of the school, which is a bucket of bulbs. They were planted and labeled with names to add a dash of welcome color this coming spring. So what's happening at our Paulson Elementary. And there you will see their new outdoor classroom. All right, and moving on, entirely away from schools, I wanted to share with the board that a team from the school district went to a town in view, the University of Victoria First People's House. And this is in conjunction with planning for our Neighborhood Learning Center at our replacement of Cowichum Secondary School. And so you can see some beautiful pictures. We were also, it was coordinated with Cowichum Tribes. And we had the great fortune of having Stephanie Atleo and Chuck Seymour, who came with us on our tour. And so these are some of the pictures from that particular tour.
And then last, I'll just ask if there were any ideas. So you brought back where our Neighborhood Learning Center.
This particular trip had occurred because Cowichum Tribe's member Stephanie Atleo, who happens to be our education coordinator, stated that this would be a great tour. You'll see this particular building. And when you walk in there, you'll see from the photos in the middle section, it is representative of a longhouse and/or a big house. And so the two folks joining us, Stephanie Atleo and Chuck Seymour, shared with us some comments with regard to how that particular longhouse is quite representative of what they would imagine our Neighborhood Learning Center could look like. And so you'll take note, and it's very difficult to see. But in the middle of the room on the last photograph, there is actually a representation of a fire. And he gets cocaine, cocaine may be driven. And above it, you'll also see some kind of like the representation of the roof opening where the smoke actually goes out of a traditional house. And I think the best question that was ever asked was, what would they have changed if they could do so? And so they did make some comments around some things that they would shift in terms of if they were ever to plan it again. And so I think overall, it certainly has provided an ability for Cowichum Tribes to indicate to the school district a number of things in that particular house that they liked, that represented Cowichum Tribes, but also some things that needed to be changed. And how they would actually maybe look forward to how that could, how it could look in our Neighborhood Learning Center.
Thank you.
And I think that's all of the photo show today. But I'd like to lastly just make comment with regard to what the board chair had to say around enhancing student learning, experiment learning sessions. They truly were excellent sessions. And I do have a handout that I can share with the board today around the two other ones that are coming. And it was a great opportunity around those leaders who were sharing the lessons learned around high-performing systems. And BC is considered one of those BC high-performing systems of learning. And also that was done by Judy and Minda, who are doctors. And their work around inquiry and inquiry. And they also changed the name to Indigenous Education. So I thought that was really profound. And the work that stood down that really moved all in BC. So that's the last of my update from myself, if I have any questions, I'd have to take them.
Please have any questions or comments? Trustee Thor?
Secret story. A lot of people, they go to the TMA. But I don't think anybody knows what eaten. Why there are four holes on one side? Why there are four holes on the other side? Which side is male, which side is female? Direction of doors? And all of the beings going across represent all of humanity? There's more to it when you say all of my relations. That's what the roof represents. Fire, we're talking about a lot of different things. I think we need to do something that we can put on the doors. People understand it's not just a building that looks kind of cool, but it actually has meaning.
Could I add to that? And I think that trustee Thor, that it was very, very eloquently shared with our team from Chuck Seymour, that it's a sacred place. And it's a place that really needs to have those learnings understood. And so I think over time, we'll be able to build that in. And we look forward to hearing from you with regards to that in this call.
Thank you, thank you for your report. Lots of wonderful things happening in our schools. We appreciate you bringing them here. We try not to go into the schools right now. And so our learning is through you. So thank you for bringing that to you. Okay, moving on to Secretary Treasurer.
Thank you. I have a very brief report under board action. The board has been informed from Ministry of Children and Families of a brand-new childcare rapid renovation fund, which totals $6 million, which is intended to support not just school boards, but public post-secondary institutions and health authorities with childcare spaces create new and expanded spaces in a rapid manner. So in other words, by rapid, they need to be small projects of no more than $5,000 per childcare space and completed by August 31st of 2021. So that is the timeframe, which is very short. It is, there are examples in your package that they have indicated of what some other school districts have done in regards to being creative with existing spaces and to create, it's not existing childcare spaces, but existing spaces in schools that can be modified to present, provide more childcare spaces. So we know that that is an area that the Early Learning Committee have been, have been looking at. And so we have a recommendation here to refer this back to the Early Learning Committee.
Thank you. Trustee group, move the trustee group. Seconded by trustee Thor. The conversation on the motion. All those in favor? Motion carries. And moving to item 13, committees and outside organizations. The first is the minutes of the last early learning meeting meeting. Trustee group, has the board of education received the minutes? Thank you. By trustee first, seconded by trustee Thor. Those in favor?
We can barely hear you again.
Okay, I will speak right. Thank you. Despite the trustee group, did you want to go over the attached early learnings review? I think that's important information that the trustee should be aware of. While we are into phase one, and we're looking at what we have now, basically, and that will be an inventory. And then hopefully, in phase two, phase two, which will be by April, will be how do we move forward? What are we going to do? And as we move forward, what are, what are our partnerships? What are our options? And then there'll be a final report. And as, as this is still a work in progress, the trustees want, they should just actually just read it. Because it is a work in progress. It is not completed yet. It is ongoing. Ongoing now, yeah. Thank you. Moving to item B, Secretary Committee meeting, trustee Croft. Is it accepted current, the current report? Moved by trustee Croft, seconded by trustee group. All those in favor? Motion carries. Moving to item C, trustee Hutchins, Beavis BC meeting. Trustee Hutchins, can you?
Sorry. Trustee Kemmler was at that meeting or chairing that meeting, I should say. I can move it, but it should be trustee Kemmler.
Okay, I'll move it over to trustee Kemmler. Okay, I move the Board of Education, we see the minutes of the October 27th, 2020. Board of Education. Thank you. Moved by trustee Kemmler, seconded by trustee group. All those in favor? Motion carries. Moving to item D, and I don't think we had a trustee at that meeting. So is there someone to move the motion around receiving the minutes from Lisa? Trustee Croft?
Lisa.
Lisa, yes.
Okay. The Board of Education is not how July we see minutes of the October 8th meeting.
Thank you. Moved by trustee Croft, seconded by trustee Thor. All those in favor? Motion carries. Moving to item E, summary of the October 23rd, 2020 BCSTA Indigenous Education Committee. Trustee Thor?
Next. The committee that some of you may be aware of. And some of the key points that have been discussed with the Indigenous Education Committee was the things around equitable funding, transportation, the local education agreements, outcome and improvement teams, being formed to see how things are progressing. Expansion of full-day K-funding. I'm still trying to understand that a lot. And recognition of language and culture in many other school districts. And we talked about creating a sixth, a sixth pro-tee day for the rest of the province of the districts to understand what we're doing here in school district 79, when we all meet within the longhouse and have First Nations folks on the floor explaining, this is who we are, this is what we do. Other than that, we have the call-out questions that will be going out there, that are out. I hope someone will be able to look at it on the BCSTA website. And then I've had a chair, and that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions? By trustee group? Item on the county council meeting, trustee group? We have sent you a zillion pieces of paper to ask you also about the last one, which was the state of the county. That the board received the minutes of the October 24th, 2020 Provincial Council meeting. Thank you. Moved by trustee group, seconded by trustee Thor. All those in favor? There is 14 upcoming meetings and events. So looking at the schedule, is there anything that a trustee wants to question or comment on? For staff? So looking at the schedule, is there anything that a trustee wants to question or comment on or staff? Trustee Kemmler? No? Okay, moving to school remembrance day ceremonies. And that is attached on page 37, just to let you know what is happening at the school. Of course, the superintendent has already said, if you're interested, call the principal and. Any questions on that? Okay, moving through correspondence, new business, question period. Are there any questions from our audience? I don't have a chat.
I've got it, I don't see anything in chat, but they all can ask questions as they're live on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Are there any questions from our audience?
I see none.
Okay, seeing nothing, a motion to adjourn. By trustee group, seconded by trustee Kemmler, all those in favor? Motion carries.